Led by Councilor Hill. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks Scott. Before we move into our regular part of the agenda, we're going to open up the meeting for anyone who has anything they'd like to say to the council. This is under the invitation of Citizens for Public Comment. And we welcome comment on anything that is not a topic already on the agenda tonight, or a matter of litigation, a quasi judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date. So if there's no conflict with any of those things, and you'd like to speak to the council tonight, you're more than welcome to come forward at this time. Just see again, make sure you sign your name and you're signing in and say your name for the record please.
My name is Zach Dodson at 1138 Southeast Davis Street. So I came here on the 8th of this month, and so ignorantly asked all of you to imagine a new pipeline being built in Oregon. However, as you guys probably all know, but I have just recently learned, there is no need to imagine anything. There is in fact a new pipeline and cooling facility planned for construction. The Pacific Connector Pipeline is a 232 mile long, 36 inch diameter pipeline on a permanent 50 foot wide easement, and an additional 45 foot construction easement, originating in Malin, Oregon and making its way through Klamath, Jackson, Douglas, and Coos counties, and crossing over the Coos, Coquill, Rogue, South Inqua, and the Klamath rivers, on the path to its final destination in Coos Bay. This pipeline will pass through 75 miles of public land, 96 miles of private land made up of over 250 individual landowners, and finally 61 miles of timber company owned land, either private or public. This project is a timber clearing project before it is a pipeline project. 41 miles of this pipeline path, of this pipeline's path will go through 100 plus year old growth. 44 miles through 40 to 100 year growth, and 61 miles through reproduction and clear cut, 0 to 40 year growth. The 47% remaining makes its way through agricultural, rangelands, and 2.7 miles of offshore lay that runs through a shallow water estuary necessary to reach the end facility, which of course would be perched right in the tsunami zone on the coast in Coos Bay. Although nearly every county permit has been permitted, zero state or federal permits have been permitted, and only an estimated 25% of private owners have permitted construction. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission denied them March 11th of this year for their latest application. However, they have not stopped building and plan to have the pipeline built and operational by 2022, regardless of what any agency has said or what is permitted. This pipeline is not owned or operated by an Oregon company, but a Colorado company. The end facility is not even owned or operated by an American company, but a Canadian company. This Jordan Cove Energy Project plans to export the majority of its gas overseas to the Japanese market, where they can sell it for three to four times what it's worth here. The gas itself will be coming by way of the Ruby Pipeline, a 680 mile pipeline originating in Opel Wyoming operated by partners of the Pacific Connector Pipeline Operators, Williams Energy. The Klamath, Karuk, and Yurok peoples have spoken loudly against this project. I am sure other native communities in the affected area have voiced their concerns for the land and waterways in the path of this destructive project, as we all should. Although it saddens me, many do not seem concerned enough. This project crosses over hundreds more small rivers and streams, cuts through three different sections of national forest, and of course crosses through traditional native lands. The watersheds this pipeline will affect, this pipeline will affect people numbering in the millions, I imagine, from southern Oregon to northern California and Nevada. Native salmon species, other fish, and larger wildlife will surely be affected immediately by habitat destruction and habitat contamination. And the forests themselves will face further erosion from this 95 foot easement, and the potential of wildfire from this deadly gas that will leak at some point, as has been proven over and over again. Sometimes it's hard for me to understand how somebody could be for a project like this, one that makes so little sense, but in fact makes so many dollars for so few people. Sometimes I don't understand how somebody wouldn't make their voice heard in such a crucial time in our country. But I understand, jobs are important, people are hurting, and now they have been led to believe that this totally destructive, maybe the most destructive form of consumption in industry will make their lives better. But I find it even harder to understand how any governing body elected to uphold the constitution and govern in a way to create the most livable life for their communities could stay silent. Or even have agreed to continue these types of projects. I can only assume that these people are looking out for themselves and not the people who elected them. So I ask again, as my governing body, make your voice heard. Take your stand, show us who you are, and that you care even the slightest. Publicly state your solidarity with these rural and native communities fighting injustice, specifically those fighting the Jordan Cove Energy Project and those fighting the Dakota Access Pipeline. Show you do not support oil and gas infrastructure in our city, our county, or our state, and give inspiration to the surrounding governments to do the same. Better yet, be the true leaders I know all of you can be, and move towards a total ban on any future oil and gas projects in our city, and work with the county and other cities in the county towards the same goal. I truly believe the decisions we make as people show who we are, they make us. The beliefs and convictions we have show other people who we are, and often show ourselves who we are. So I ask you to make a decision, where do you stand? Show us and yourselves who you are. Water is life. Thank you guys.
Thanks Zach. Does anyone else who'd like to speak to the council tonight? Nope? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to some presentations. First we'll hear from Renee Vorm with Yamhill, or your county, your community media organizers of, I'm going to get through this, I'm sorry. Come on up, I'm just, I have a cold head today. Your community mediators of Yamhill County.
Correct, thank you.
It doesn't sound like the microphone's on for me because I'm just completely fogheaded today.
Is it on?
It is, I just can't hear anything.
Okay. I'm Renee Vorm, and I'm the board, chairman of the board for your community mediators. Marlena couldn't make it tonight, and so I'm giving you an update on what we've been doing all year. The calendar, our calendar year had just started July 1st, and so we have trained new mediators in conjunction with George Fox. We have about nine new mediators, and they trained eight George Fox students at the same time. We have been continuing our work with doing a lot of truancy mediation, continuing with 12 cases a month at Small Claims Court. We're doing, still doing parenting plans and doing the conflict resolution training at the juvenile detention center. And we do that every other Wednesday. We also are starting in February, we are doing a free listening service at the senior center for people that have concerns but just need somebody to listen to them. We don't, aren't professing to have the solutions, but we will listen. McMinnville continues to use about 65% of our total resources. And so that would be, I think, yes, you have your numbers up there. And so that would be about $52,000 a year of our total budget, which is $80,000. And so we have served, in the 2015-2016 year, we served 353 McMinnville residents and held 162 mediations. On this year, we're actually working on a neighborhood project that the McMinnville City Manager referred to us. So we've been doing work on that, have held a facilitation, and will hold another one after the 1st of the year. So that is what we have been doing and continue to do. We're on budget, and we're grateful for your support. Do you have any questions about what we've been doing or?
Alan, I'll start with you, anything?
No, just to comment that, thank you for your work. It's a great service to the community, for sure.
Thank you.
Makes a lot of good things happen.
Scott?
Thank you.
Renee, thank you, and tell Marlena the same. You know of our, our support in times past. I appreciate you coming at this time as we're starting the budget cycle. You know, we shared last year that the budget cycle could be a little different, and so it's too early to tell, you know, where and what direction we're going to be going, but this kind of report, having it early helps us in that process, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Larry?
No, appreciate the work you're doing. Keep it up.
Thank you. Thanks.
All right, thank you so much.
Okay, I wanted to say, Scott, we have listened to your concerns, and we did ask the court to support us with some extra money next year, since we're doing so much truancy mediation, that seems to be growing and growing. So we've asked the court to throw, you know, to give our support for that program with some dollars, so we can continue that and ramp up for that.
We're going to have, we're going to have a strong, good discussion from a council and a budget perspective this year, so that we can truly kind of give some direction.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Up next, we have an update from Executive Director Jody Christensen from the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. Thanks for coming, Jody.
Thank you for having me. So I believe you have some information in your board packet. We had visited earlier this year about the request that MEDP had, and you were kind enough to confirm 42,000 of our $60,000 request. At that time, you had asked that I come back after the tax revenues had been reviewed, so that is my reason for being before you today. In your packet, we provided some information for your review. You've seen elements of this before. An example of the newsletter that we do monthly, you received that, I believe, twice. Once through our regular system, and then a second time from my desk with a note describing how it connects to the work that we do. In the article that we provided, those are the companies that we featured during our VIP tours. Kelly was able to join us for that. And we really wanted you to have an opportunity to see behind the scenes of the companies. That was the intention behind the VIP tour, to help establish relationships between elected officials and leaders in our community with our business community. And I think that we saw the value in that. Our companies certainly were excited to show what they do, and I believe our elected officials and other leaders in our community were excited to see what's being made here. They're not just stories, they're very intentional and directed about how we communicate the way McMinnville does business, and how we partner with companies so that they can be successful here. So through every story, you're hearing what's being made, but you're also hearing McMinnville's side of their success. And so I hope that you continue to read those monthly articles. We send those nationally, they go to the governor's office, they go to the company, and end up oftentimes in corporate newsletters. They're a story that we hope reaches far and wide. I've also provided for you a list of our current projects and our current activities. This just gives you a sense of some of the things that we're working on in our office. They're highly confidential, as you appreciate, and you've said often that you understand confidentiality. But I wanted you to see the value of the time that we spend on projects. So we're currently working on a number of projects that include retention and expansion of existing businesses. And we're also, as you know, this year really focused on strategic recruitment efforts. We've invested time and money in two pilots. One is a small pilot that we have with four partners, and the other's a pilot that we have with 19. The smaller pilot is with Greater Portland Inc., Ready out of Redmond, and Sedcor out of Salem. We're investors, and we've hired a consultant to generate up to six leads of companies that have projects that could be in Oregon within the next 12 to 24 months. We've completed the first lead generation calls, we've had two out of the six, and they're very good projects, and McMinnville's very competitive on those. So we're meeting directly with the CEOs who have, who are the decision makers about those projects. The second project that we're working on is an actual project that we're leading out of our office through Team Oregon. We have a contract with a Canadian consultant, and we're generating, we've asked them to generate up to 25 leads with projects that have 50 or more employees, and that have a 12 to 24 month time, decision timeframe. And that has been very successful. That project started in September. I'll be managing that project through the end of May. We've had four meetings so far. We actually had those onsite at Fabtech, the nation's largest metal manufacturing show last week. Three of those projects are considered live. We had the state recruitment officer with us, and then one is considered a soft lead. So those are projects that we're actually talking to the decision makers. This isn't a site consultant, this isn't a realtor, these are the people who are running the country, the company. So we're very, we're very positive and strategic about this effort, and we feel that this is a good place for us to invest our time and our energy. A couple of new items for, that have occurred since we last met. We will be launching our first ever site tour. It's called an Opportunity Tour. That's on December 8th. It's an urban renewal opportunities tour. We've invited 140 people to that event, everything from people who've shown interest in urban renewal, just to learn more, those that want, that are thinking about construction projects, buying it as an investment, and those that just are really trying to figure out what is urban renewal. We've invited realtors, construction people, businesses, we've tapped into a few of the state representatives that we have. We just want to make sure that people know that the city of McMinnville has a really great opportunity, and how can they leverage that opportunity? Again, that tour takes place on December 8th at 2:30. We'll be taking a tour of the Hubbard Shoe Grease Building for the first half an hour. The second half an hour, we have Heather Richards and Walt Gowell there to answer questions. And then we're moving over to the grain station to showcase something that is possible with, with a building that looked very different just a few years ago. So we're really trying to open up the opportunities for people and get people to think creatively. Our next site tour will be industrial, around industrial property in our three large sites. That's later on. That'll be a much more intensive project for us. It'll involve site selectors and multiple days. And so we'll be spending some time working on that. We also have heard very significant, and continue to hear very significant challenges around workforce for our companies. This is something that we have to, as a community, tackle. Our internship is just a small sliver of a solution oriented initiative. We really want to be bringing more strategic and best practice and value oriented opportunities for our company. We're with Oregon Manufacturing Extension Partnership and a company called Kinesis to put on what we're calling the Next Series. This is going to be strategic solutions for advanced manufacturers. It's a series of four targeted sessions on solving and integrating workforce solutions in a manufacturing environment. We are thrilled that both OMAP and Kinesis, some of the leaders in workforce development, have offered to help us with this program. And I think if I was to give a theme for this year is that we're going to stop being humble about what McMinnville has to offer, and I'm going to use a little bit more "I" in what I do, as opposed to "it's them", "the manufacturers are great, y'all are great", we're going to, we're going to step it up this year, and there's two reasons we're doing that. One is we're very, we're staff that's very skilled at being able to get the message out. I have a spectacular team. I've never felt that we've had this kind of support in the past, so I'm going to take full advantage while I have them for the next year, and you're going to see some amazing things out of our office. The second thing is that we're going to have a different kind of economic development strategy in this state due to the lack of video lottery funds to support Business Oregon. So we are going to see some significant reductions in support with people and programs out of that office, which means there's a bigger burden on the office in McMinnville to get out and do more, and be more aggressive, and be more focused on where we're spending our time, because we won't have the support that we've had at the level with the state. And so we're in a good position. This is, will be an aggressive year for us. We'll do a lot of learning, and I think that you'll see some really incredible products coming out of our office, and some value for our companies here. So at this time, I would ask if you have any questions.
Larry, I'll start with you.
I have no questions. I'm just, I'm just really pleased with what you're doing. I've been keeping up with all the material you've been sending out, and I, I'm impressed with the effort that's being put into it, and I just commend you and ask you, just keep going, please.
Thank you, thank you.
Helen?
I love the tours and things that you're organizing. I'd like to do the December 8th tour too.
Okay.
Interested in all of what you're trying to get out to the people. I think it's fascinating. Thank you so much.
Make sure you bring a coat. I remember seeing that.
Yes, a coat and wool gloves. There's no heating. We'll provide lighting, but no heating.
Scott? Jody, I hope you get the sense how much we appreciate you at the council level. Over the last couple of months, as I've gotten more involved in economic development, I mean, you're at every meeting of economic development there that I'm at, and I see close up how, how people listen to what you say, and they watch what you do. I knew that before, but I see that firsthand. It's a partnership we really got to connect with. It's a partnership we've got to work out. We've got some budget restraints in front of us right now that we've had to deal as a council that have taken us off a little bit of where we're at. But as we commit to this process in 2017, going to our next fiscal budget, we've got to partner, we've got to talk, and that'll be a commitment that I'll make, that we will have those conversations, and with the council and the budget committee, we'll know where we're at. And so, the last thing I want to do is burst this good thing that's happening right now with economic development. We have more strength within the city with some hires that we've brought, and I just see this being a process that is only going to get better and better and better as we do all the other things that we're trying to do in the city. So again, thank you, your staff, and the many partners that you talked to, work with behind the scenes that allow you to continue to do what you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Alan? I think everybody appreciates your passion for it, your work ethic, your leadership with the group. I'm really looking forward to that tour on December 8th. Been driving past.
Yeah, it's such a cool building. It's not like, not the technical term for it, but it's an awesome space. And we feel that just by being in there, it's going to generate some really innovative thought about what's possible in the urban renewal, particularly with that building.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I traveled all over the state and worked at a lot of different chambers, and McMinnville's famous largely because of you, Jody, and everyone knows your name and what you do, and I just really appreciate your leadership and all that you've done for us. And it's, it's so cool to travel around and seeing products that are made here, and I'm sure you get little, little thrills as well, that probably never gets sold, to be out in the middle of nowhere and find a little Betty Lou's ball, or Wayne Henry knife on some downtown street.
That's the most awesome feeling, yeah.
Yeah, just know that you're a part of that. That's just great. So look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks.
Well, what I would like to do is, I'd like to bring companies to meet you. And so I'd love to be able to bring in a couple of business owners to visit with you, maybe during a dinner meeting if you'd like. I can't promise every dinner meeting, but you know, maybe, maybe once a quarter, we could look at a certain sector. We have some amazing companies that want to participate in VIP tours. We're not going to have the bandwidth to do tours again for a while, so maybe that's a way for us to get you better connected with our industry partners, and really ask, you know, what can we do to help? You often ask that question of me, and I'd love you to hear their answer. I think that they like being in McMinnville, they love being in McMinnville, to be honest with you, but there are always opportunities to help, and I'd love to be able to bring them and introduce them, and kind of step out of the way and let that relationship grow between you and the industry partners.
And be aware too, that, you know, you may not have the opportunity to bring them to us, but we can go to them.
I know tours are always fun.
So, you know, I mean, being an ex-banker, that's what I loved about banking, was to be able to go behind the doors and understand what's making a company so successful. And, you know, depending upon our availability, I would think that anyone on the council, if they had time and ability, would be there to go out and visit with you and just let perspectives and existing businesses know how much we appreciate them.
Perfect. All right, well, tours are easy to set up. That's not a problem.
I realize I just had one other question. You mentioned the workforce problems. Are those specifically training and education, and if so?
Finding people.
Finding people.
Finding people. So I've been having really good conversations with the McMinnville Chamber, and my hope is that this year we put together a team of people who really take a look at how McMinnville can get better, at identifying where the talent is, kind of creating the pipeline resources. You know, the relationship that our industry partners have with Linfield, I'd love to see that with every, you know, with Chamecada and with the school district, and really help people understand the opportunities of an entry level position. That that's an entry level position, and that there's so much potential and opportunity for someone to have an extraordinary career, but you have to sweep the floors first. So you've got to start somewhere, and I'd love to be able to spend some time helping companies define pathways within their organization, and then helping our young people, and there's so many people that are moving into our community, get connected. I think that there's just a huge opportunity there.
I think there's also the issue of making it attractive for young people to be here.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think that's a challenge, it's never going to go away, especially with, in this rising generation, where their attention just seems to be in the weirdest places. And how do you get them to, I mean, there's more careers out there than just being a doctor, or a lawyer, or a nurse, you know, or a teacher or something. They just have very narrow ideas of what careers are.
And I think that, you know, we could spend all day. Young people aren't attracted to paychecks. They're attracted to different things. They want to be involved in a company that has a social component to it, both internally, and that they give back to the community. I can tell you, every manufacturer that I deal with has a social component to it. They're very family oriented inside, and they also give back to the community. That's a very attractive. That's a very attractive element to a young person. But most of our companies don't talk about that. So if we can help them understand how to talk to young people and attract them, keep them and grow them. Because as I said, an entry-level job isn't get in and stop there. The idea is they're going to invest in you so you can grow up through the company. So it's just helping people get better at the conversation and getting better at defining the benefits of working for them. And again, I could spend all day, but... Yes, thank you so much.
Up next, we have a presentation by David Renshaw and Janet Adams. You want to come on down?
We wanted to brag a little bit about our colleague Jay Pearson, our Parks and Recreation Director. He won a very important award two weeks ago today. A well-deserved award, although he's still a little bit embarrassed about all the attention at this point. But we wanted to show you the award and the video that was shown at the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association Conference. And then David Renshaw is going to tell you a little bit about the award itself.
Thank you for your time tonight. Candace asked me to come tonight and chat a little bit about the David Clark Award. I think it's more a testament to having been around a long time than anything else. I happen to know David and can speak about the award a little bit. The Dave Clark Award is the highest award that the ORPA gives, and it's for a reason. You know, as professionals, we're all lucky if we get to be around one or two other colleagues in our career that we admire or view as role models. And for me personally, I've been really lucky in that regard. There's folks in this room to my left, behind me, to my right, in front of me, that I view as role models. And so I've always kind of paid attention to that and tried to find those folks. As a young Parks and Recreation Director in the late 1980s, and I know it's a shocking word, young, to apply to me, but it was a time. I had the opportunity to work with Dave. I worked in Junction City, Dave worked in Albany. And so there was a little bit of a connection there. And I actually had to work with him professionally for a number of years. And what I found most compelling about Dave was his conviction, his conviction for the field and his passion for the field and his ability to draw other people into that and create a shared vision and move everybody towards a common goal. And those are really just words that we all hear about leadership, but you would have had to have been in those rooms and those meetings and those presentations and those site visits to feel that or listen to him talk to a service group. Pretty compelling stuff. And so as a result of that, Albany as a community is reaping the benefits of that. They have a fabulous park system which will serve that community for years, which is a testament to Dave's vision. And as a person, what I remember most about Dave was his grin. If you look at a picture of him, whatever it was today, or what I think Jay would agree with this, he just had this kind of grin that just kind of, again, drew people in. As if he knew something that maybe not everybody knew, but he was willing to tell you. Come here, let me share this with you. And the nice thing about that, he was willing to share that expertise and his experience, not only with folks from around the country, but with a small-town guy from a little town without a lot of resources. And so that meant a lot to me personally. All the experiences I had with Mr. Clark were invaluable, from learning specific things about the field, to learning how to work with service clubs, to learning how to capture that passion and share it with your staff and share it with your community. So he was definitely a tremendous role model. A couple of things I'd like to leave you with, a couple of factoids. Dave Clark served Albany for 27 and a half, 28 years as Parks and Recreation Director. Interesting factoid, he was first hired as a recreation supervisor. Dave built parks that won design awards. He championed the development of a community trail system. Dave served his community in a variety of ways, not just through his professional endeavors, but in his interaction with kids in the community and youth sports in a variety of ways. And probably most importantly and most memorably for me, he was a tireless voice and tireless advocate for the value of a robust park system and the importance of having a comprehensive recreation program. Albany's reaping those benefits and the field and the state of Oregon in the field of Parks and Recreation was very lucky to have Dave as a colleague. I'm thinking at this point, some of these factoids and kind of some of this discussion might remind you of someone that we all know. And so I won't bore you with anything else. I'll let Janet and others tell you about Dave's, or excuse me, Jay's career. But based on what I know about Dave Clark and my experiences with him and what I know about Mr. Pearson, I can't think of a more deserving honoree. I'm very happy for him and I think the city is very lucky to have him and I think the city should be very proud of him. So I'd like to offer my personal congratulations to Jay and well done. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Dave. The Davy Clark Honor Award is specifically to recognize someone who's shown an immense amount of leadership and inspired others. Lots of people from the city of McMinnville, both current staff members and volunteers and past staff members were involved in nominating Jay for this award. And this is the video that was put together that was shown at the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association Conference a couple of weeks ago. I hope you enjoy it. Oh, Melissa, which one? Back up? Can you show me? Back up?
Okay. Push on that.
There we go. Thank you.
In the beginning, there was baseball.
Big Jay Pearson's on the mound and throwing heat. Hit him with dog parks, unruly teams and a seismically unsound National Guard armory and he'll sit him down, one, two, three.
A half-century ago, in his high school days down in Palo Alto, California, Jay Pearson's first job as a part-time baseball umpire is what launched his career in Parks and Recreation. Jay loved baseball and a chance to play ball for Oregon State University, Go Beavers, brought him north. In 1976, President Richard Nixon's Comprehensive Education and Training Act established a grant that provided funding for the Portland Parks and Recreation Department to create a one-year position working with low-income youth. This job brought Jay back to the West Coast to work at the Selwood Community Center. While there, Jay coordinated youth recreation programs, supervised the facility, and happened to work with a guy named Dave Clark for whom this award is named. As the nation turned 200 years old, Jay, who was a mere 26-years-old at the time and newly married, wrapped up his year-long stint with the Portland Parks and Recreation Department and cast about for the next step in his career. He accepted a job as recreation coordinator and his arrival doubled the total number of staff working for the McMinnville Parks and Recreation Department. Little did he or anyone else know at the time, this position would be the start of a 30-plus-year career and still going with the city of McMinnville. 1977, the city of McMinnville had a population of just 12,000 people. Jay's office was a desk crammed into a hallway. Despite the cramped workspace and paltry number of Parks and Recreation Department colleagues, Jay got to work developing recreation programs, parks and facilities for the small community.
My name is Jay Pearson and I'm the recreation supervisor for the city of McMinnville. As you know, here at the People Place, the new community center, which is a multipurpose facility supported by a $2.6 million bond issued by the city of McMinnville.
Jay's contributions are not just work. It's not simply a job to him. His contributions reflect a calling, a vocation, and his deep commitment to the community he serves. It's impossible to condense a 40-year career into a two-minute video. Jay's list of accomplishments and the people whose lives he's touched is simply too long to cover. The number of parks he's built is extraordinary. The number of children and families who have participated in Jay's programs over the past few decades is countless. And the staff he's supervised are immeasurably grateful for his leadership.
He's capable of going the distance. Nearly 40 years on the field and still no activity in the bullpen. You can't get this guy off the mound. Someday we'll have to say, that one's going, going, gone, but not today. Keep bringing the heat, Jay. Keep bringing the heat.
So this is a picture of Jay's family on the left, his wife Becky and his son John and Zach. And one of the things that we all know in the Parks and Recreation Department is that working for the city, working for Parks and Recreation Department, it isn't just a job. It's not an eight-to-five thing. It's a lifestyle, it's a passion. And Jay and his whole family have brought that to our community. They've accomplished together an awful lot. So although this is Jay's award, we also wanted to recognize his wife Becky for being part of the family as well. So Becky, you have to come up here.
I'm not part of the deal. Easy for you. When I brought these into the community center earlier today, Karen saw them and asked me, oh, there's another Becky. And I said, oh, we've been with Jay for so long. This is the family that is going to be Jay will be a little... Thank you, everyone, for honoring and allowing us to be part of the city of McMinnville. It's been an amazing journey. It's not over yet. Oh, there's James' room. I just, I love the staff here and it's so great to be so...
I got a mic if Jay wants to give a spare. I'm just kidding, Jay.
Few remarks, Jay?
This is not his favorite part.
Well, I was told to behave myself tonight and appreciate the fact that I have such a great staff and I have such a great family that's been part of this run here for 40 years or almost 40 years. Two of my favorite pictures that occurred, I was completely surprised at the conference. So I thank those that connived, even got the Oregon Recreation and Parks Association staff to keep things secret. So I was quite surprised when this all happened. My favorite picture there, of course, is with my family. When we passed the bond levy, John and Zach were little guys, they're a lot younger. And the four of us went around over 1,000 houses, hanging things on doors and knocking on doors. And so, and then Zach has actually gone to the Oregon State Parks Grant presentations when he was about seven or something, or he might have been 10, and talked about, maybe a little older than that, I guess, because he talked about Discovery Meadows and what a great park that'll be and we needed a grant for it, you know, especially for the skate park and the climbing boulder and everything out there. And so they've been involved from the beginning. And I won't go into stories right now. But the second photo that I liked so much that we took up there, and I don't know that we have it tonight, but was same kind of deal, but with the staff that showed up. We had three other people with me at the conference, but so many people drove up from down here just for the hour-long, two-hour-long conference awards ceremony. I didn't know. They were all hiding, I guess, I was presenting some other awards and they were all ducking behind people so I wouldn't see them. But it's a collective shot too, and that is very important to me. Even as I blurted out sort of accidentally that Homeris showed up, that really surprised me too, who is retired, of course, and he was there. That was quite fantastic. And then we have Dan Preston and his wife Jane. You know, you talk about community connections and Dan has been a friend all these years. He coached with me, but he's the president of our Kids in the Block Incorporated Board. So he's given back to our department. And you know, all those things, and then having Dave here tonight is great because, you know, he knew Dave Clark. We both did, of course. I knew Dave when he was at Junction City and we worked together through Oregon Recreation and Parks Association, which is an association of about 500 people that do the jobs that we do from administratively to the program levels all the way across the state. It's an outstanding organization that represents the interests of communities. They extend themselves like we do here. We share information with our professional colleagues, you know, throughout the year and throughout our careers. We pick each other's brains, we celebrate each other's successes and we celebrate maybe over beers on each other's failures. But it's an organization that is so truly committed to the profession that I've loved. I mentioned at the conference, it struck me at a moment that when I was in third grade, I couldn't go to the recreation program after school in my elementary school. I had to wait to fourth grade when I was nine-years-old and I was like on seventh heaven, running out to the playground after school, knowing that I could participate now with the big kids when I was nine-years-old. And I've been kind of doing this ever since. Worked for that Park and Recreation Department all the way through high school and even during college some. So it's kind of in me, I grew up with it. And I've had the pleasure of working with some terrific people. Kent's in the office or in the room tonight. And of course, you can't do anything without support of the people around you where you work. These photographs, my family, the one that's not shown, but with the staff, could very well be me standing there with the council and all the folks that worked on the council in my career. It could be with me and the folks who have graduated from our department, Galen McBee, the first Park and Recreation Director, and the staff that he had, that we worked together with, department heads, Mike, his staff, the PD who helps us so much and works with us so thoroughly in the finance department. Everybody is involved with our successes and our failures for that matter. So it's really humbling to stand up and be recognized for this, knowing that it really reflects not just what we have accomplished together, but that it reflects the efforts and the enthusiasms and the inspirations that we find with our colleagues through ORPA. That's where this originates, Oregon Recreation and Parks Association. We have great people in that organization that we can count on and that I've been able to count on through the years to ask questions of and learn by. Dave Clark being one of the magnificent people you'd ever want to meet. So I try to avoid these deals, but I appreciate the fact that you've taken time tonight and had this conversation. It's fun. I want to acknowledge again our staff. If you look at the years that they've spent with us and have been committed to us, the many experiences, roles that our staff has taken. And they could all stand up and tell you that it's not nine-to-five and it's not five days a week. And if we told you the stories of the goofy things and the odd challenges that you never hear about, I think we'd do a better job maybe scripting the program Parks and Recreation than the program did itself. So I appreciate it. I appreciate everyone that's contributed to our department and the fun that we've had in trying to enrich the lives of people in McMinnville and make this community, you know, very livable and a place where people want to settle. I think it's working. It's got an impact economically and just in terms of intrinsic values and I'm proud to be a part of that. So thanks to the staff again. I can't tell you, I can't speak enough about the contributions you guys make. Don't say it enough, but we've flunked on that. Thanks to all the volunteers that we have and then our administrative champions like Kent and those before him and you. It's just very much appreciated. So I'm going to fill that up with some beer and pour these guys one beer in about 10 minutes.
Well, you can go back to your seat or you can stay up there, but I think we all have, would like to say something. Ellen, do you want to?
We love you.
Thanks. I love you too.
Well, I'm going to have a few more words than "I love you." A couple of things that when I heard of the award, Jay, it made me so proud. It talks to me of, you know, the... phenomenal job. We moved to McMinnville in 1992. My son was five, so I don't know if he was able to be in Parks and Recs program, but the first year he was, he went out for soccer and he went out for T-ball. And I can't remember, but Jay was one of those coaches that Brad had the opportunity to be on, and Brad and John were the same age. And so, I watched Jay not only as a leader in the community, but as a coach that set a great example for our youth. And it's amazing today, Brad being 30, and if I say, "Oh, I saw Jay Pearson," he perks up today. And it's the same with Becky and Jay. They're always asking me, "Well, how's Brad doing?" So it's not something he just does on the job, but it's a part of the fabric that is his. When he touches kids, it's for a lifetime, and it goes both ways. You know, in my career, I've had an awfully lot of opportunity to travel in the Willamette Valley with my job. We've had banks in a lot of different cities, and so I've been involved with chambers and with cities. And I was always amazed that when I'd go into a community, I said I was from McMinnville, they'd say a couple of things. Number one, they says, "Oh, how livable McMinnville is. It's a cute, quaint little town you should be very excited to be from." And I said, "Yes, yes, I was very excited to be from McMinnville." Then they would talk about, "Do you know Jay Pearson?" And so, across the Willamette Valley, people knew of our program and knew that Jay was the driving force behind that. They talked about our chamber, they talked about MDA. But those are the kinds of programs that are sustained for long periods of time, and Jay was brought up in those conversations. So I'm glad we recognize Becky with flowers because an individual is only as good as the spouse will allow them to be in giving back, and she's been one that's given back. So it truly is a family, a family thing that we can mark you, made in McMinnville, all your family, because you advocate. And again, just speaking from a council perspective, keep up the good work, and we do love and appreciate you. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Larry. Well, congratulations, Jay, on a well-deserved award. I don't want to say anything to water down this. I think the word, it speaks for itself. But on the practical side, longevity has a lot to do and sometimes come back to haunt us. But congratulations, you've done a fantastic job, and appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you, Larry.
I think it's, being a Parks and Rec Director must be kind of like an eternal fountain of youth, because I think of you and Galen McBee, and man, the two of you just really are so enthusiastic. I mean, Galen still is like crazy happy about anything. "Oh, you can do a park over here, Kelly. You know, I'm taking you out or doing bike rides." And I think the same thing with you. I got to meet you for the first time at Rotary, and we built that awful play structure that you guys completely rebuilt later.
Yeah, I remember that.
And then I don't know how many times and how many projects. I think the Wetland project, I think of roofing some park buildings, and then most recently the We Saw project and Bachi stuff. You know, you've just been an integral part of the club's life certainly for many, many years. And I also think that there's a certain responsibility that goes with working with you, like, "You know, we could really use about three more letters, Kelly, and send them out to these people."
That's right.
Sometimes I feel rather remiss, but you're always on the spot, and you run fabulous committees. I mean, you're like watching a master putting together a park plan and how you deal with the people and everything. You just are a remarkable individual, and you, this is a well-deserved reward.
Thank you.
Well, Jay, as a young father, I can't thank you enough for the entertainment that you have provided my son in those parks. It just, the other day, we were driving down Chaguen, and he saw the Chaguen play structure. It was pouring down rain, and he was screaming, "Get out, get out, out, I want out." He wants to play. He recognizes the work that you do and your team do, and I think we take it for granted of how amazing these parks are, but if you ever get a chance to travel around the state and see these other parks, there's been times where I've had to put my son back in the car before we even touched the play structure, because it just wasn't, didn't, isn't a place I would want my son out to play. And that's hard to explain to a two-year-old why he's not going to go on the swings today, but it's, our parks are wonderful, and I think your eye is everywhere. I really appreciated the video and seeing kind of, you know, what your hand has been able to do, and it's just amazing. I really appreciate all that you do, and congratulations on the award.
Thank you.
Did you have anything you wanted to say? You've known him for a while.
Oh, I'm just thrilled. I think I've already said everything that I had to say right to Jane when I found out
the published, the consent agenda, we are just going to be looking at Resolution Number
about the award.
2016-83, which is authorizing the acquisition of property on 99 and Second Street.
I'm going to disclose by acknowledging Becky. We came, we got married in 77, and we came here in 77, and somehow we've survived it. But no kidding, we've done a lot of this together, and I appreciate it.
So that's all there is on the consent agenda.
I was very happy that you were at Eugene, and I thank you for making that happen.
Is everyone okay with keeping that on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
And I thank everybody else for the scheming and conniving and all the ins and outs and
All right. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
things that were put together here.
I shall move.
So we have a motion by Counselor Menke and a second by Counselor Hill.
So, and I thank the council.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Thanks very much.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed, say nay.
(applause)
The consent agenda passed unanimously, which takes us now into a public hearing. And before we move into that, counsel, I want to let you all know that I have a potential conflict, as I am possibly a candidate for the city manager position. And so I'm going to recuse myself from the discussion, and I'm going to turn the gavel over to you, Scott.
Thank you.
So you can pass it down.
This public hearing is, under Oregon state law, requires that the hiring standards, criteria, and policy directives used to hire a chief executive officer be adopted by the governing body, in which a meeting is open to the public, in which the public has the opportunity to comment on the standards, criteria, and the policy directives. And so this is the purpose of this public hearing. Again, I would like to let you know that we're going to bring Resolution Number 2016-86 up right after this discussion, which is the resolution that will be able to submit what we're doing today and the criteria put into our books. And so we'll take care of that while Kevin has excused himself, and then we'll bring him back and then move forward with the rest of our meeting. So I am going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Do anyone in their audience would like to give testimony on that which is before us? Mark? Would sign in and state your name?
Mark Davis, 652 Southeast Washington Street. Most of the time I come to speak here, I'm pretty comfortable, you know, I sort of understand what's going on. I have to be honest that, I mean, I read all of this, you know, it sounded pretty familiar, you know, we just, we hired a city manager within the last couple of years. I mean, I don't have any problem with what's written there, but I do have some concern about, you know, how we're going to move forward. I mean, as I read this and I think back to the previous city manager, I think, well, you know, from my perspective, I'm an outsider, you know, and I understand things went on in public, you know, in private that I'm not party to, and I don't want to know about it. I mean, it's none of my business. But it makes me, it's difficult for me to understand as a citizen, you know, how we're going to do better this time. I mean, I'm not seeing it in these, this list of criteria that's up here. I mean, you know, there's, there are things that just aren't, you know, in writing, I think, that's, you know, sometimes you say fit, I mean, you know, other ways of describing how you find a candidate that's really the person that's going to work for the city. You know, so I'm a bit puzzled. I almost feel like, you know, instead of you hearing from the citizens, the city council should be talking to the citizens and explaining, you know, how we're going to do this better this time. You know, I thought the process last time seemed pretty reasonable to me. You know, I frankly wasn't impressed with all the candidates that Prothman brought forward, but I mean, I thought there were, you know, two or three good candidates there, and, you know, you never know when you're interviewing people. Sometimes somebody that doesn't look good on paper turns out to be really good in person. So I understand the process, but, you know, I assume that you're talking about this, you know, amongst yourselves that are, you know, trying to figure out how we're going to get to a point where we can hire somebody that's, you know, going to be successful and that, you know, that it's all going to work out going forward. So that's primarily what I want to say. I guess I'm also a little uncomfortable with Council President Jeffries', you know, maybe in, maybe out kind of position. I think Counselor Drabkin made a good point, or several good points, when she spoke about his possible application for the job. I mean, I just, I just think that creates a real awkward situation for you folks, especially sitting at the front of the room, but I think for the city in general. I, you know, I don't have an answer for that. I mean, you know, Council President Jeffries has a perfect right to apply for the position. There's nothing illegal about that. It's just, you know, it just doesn't look right or feel right to me. And, you know, I would hope that he would make a decision sooner rather than later so that it could be clear to everybody, you know, what's going to happen. And, you know, that's all I got to say. I, you know, I wish you well. I think it's going to be a tough choice, and, you know, but we need to hire another city manager. We need to move forward. We can't look back and say, "Oh, we should have done this and should have done that." I mean, you know, hindsight's always 20/20, but we've got to look ahead and come up with a good decision. I think these criteria and standards are reasonable, you know, but I think you're going to have some work to do to apply them and get us a good person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Any other individual like to come before us in this public hearing and give testimony? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Now, counsel, we have an opportunity, because we do have this resolution before us, to discuss and deliberate kind of our feelings. And so I think what I'll do is start with Larry, and we'll just work our way down with any thoughts or questions that you may have that we need to deliberate on, and we'll just go Kelly after that, and then Alan, and then myself. I guess my first question is, since Mark spoke, is there any chance of discussing the, what the, what we've, what we were laying out as an agenda for the hiring process that Candace has presented to us today, yesterday? Yeah, I would guess that now that is, we've given that out so we could share, we could share that. Mark, what we're talking about is, earlier this evening, we've come up with a recruitment plan that really will outline the steps that we're going to be following, and I think we would, we could even share that with anyone that would be of interest. So you could walk home with a three-page document that outlines dates, approaches, why we've kind of changed some of the things that we've changed, and the end result of how we're going to get to that point, where as you asked the question, "How are you going to know that you make the right decision this time?" And I think we've outlined this, and you'll see some more specifics. And I'll tell you that one of the things that was brought up initially was, "Why are we doing this over the holiday season?" And when we heard that, we gave the Prothman group a call and said, "Are we in the holiday?" And we had started the process early enough that Greg had felt very comfortable that we will have a number of good candidates to look at. And our final resolve is if we go through this first round and we don't see the kind of candidate we want, we're going to stop and we'll start after the beginning of the year and start the process all over with the Prothman group supporting us and doing whatever it would be necessary. We're not going to rush into this process, I can promise you that. So again, we can make that available to anyone in the group that would be interested, but Mark, definitely we can have that, give that to you today. And then feel free to contact any of us or Candace if you have questions. Does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Because, and what's in this proposal is not cut and stone yet, which is a good thing. We may tweak it a little bit as we go, but what I like about the process that we're going through is that I believe, based on our past experience, we're taking it a step deeper, a little more thorough, and a little more intense. So we're not taking this lightly, and it's serious, and I believe that Mark made the perfect comment when he says, "You don't know what you got till they're sitting behind the desk, probably." We can do all the right things and still miss it, so, but we're going to, we're going to try to be more thorough this time.
Only years, Beth.
Yeah. Dave says, "And Candace will stick around a couple of years if we need her to."
He did, didn't he?
Speaking on behalf of you.
Did I, did I mistake, sorry.
She's taking really long vacations, so.
Kelly?
Long as it takes.
I have quite a bit of input in what's in here. I guess my takeaway from the last interview process that we went through is it was very, it seemed not enough to me. And I don't know that we would have made a different decision with more, but this time we've definitely are doing a lot of things that we had done before with department head hires that we just, for whatever reason, did not do last time. And for that, at least, I feel good. We know a little more this time. I think we all know that some experience would really be a good thing. So I'm very focused on what the process is and a very strong desire to try and do much better this go-around. Believe me, we don't want to have to repeat it, but, you know, we'll see what happens.
Alan?
Thank you, Mark. You're always here. Thirty-four thousand people, we can count on you being here for a public hearing. And the words are timely and well-thought-out. Thank you for that. And your concerns are common to our concerns, for sure. Everything that you said, we've discussed many times, and we will as we move forward on the process. So, yeah, having been through it, we are doing things somewhat different. We have the same Prothman group who is handling the applications, but I think we have learned a lot, and whether or not it makes any difference, I don't know. We'll just have to go through the process. I think we have, and we've streamlined it somewhat, and it's like Councilman Yoder was saying, "You don't know what you have." that we just, for whatever reason, did not do last time. And for that, at least, I feel good. We know a little more this time. I think we all know that some experience would really be a good thing. So I'm very focused on what the process is and a very strong desire to try and do much better this go-around. Believe me, we don't want to have to repeat it, but, you know, we'll see what happens.
Alan?
Thank you, Mark. You're always here. Thirty-four thousand people, we can count on you being here for a public hearing. And the words are timely and well-thought-out. Thank you for that. And your concerns are common to our concerns, for sure. Everything that you said, we've discussed many times, and we will as we move forward on the process. So, yeah, having been through it, we are doing things somewhat different. We have the same Prothman group who is handling the applications. But I think we have learned a lot. And whether or not it makes any difference, I don't know. We'll just have to go through the process. I think we have, and we've streamlined it somewhat. And it's like Counselman Yoder was saying, "You don't know what you have till you have it." And hopefully, we'll see any positives or negatives in the interview process as it goes step by step by step by step in a timely, organized manner. So I guess that's all I have to say about it.
Good. My concluding remarks would be, as a council, we have really sat down and taken a look at what we thought were gaps that we had before. And you're going to see a lot more criteria that talks about public administration as compared to like opportunities of gaining their education. And so we tightened it up, that we really now feel like there's got to be a proven track record. And the one thing at the very end that we're going to be doing is going out and interviewing the staff of wherever, whoever comes from, to make sure that we can verify what's on paper and what's told to us. We can go out and have personal interviews, and we're planning on doing that. I think in and of itself, that is going to be, is going to be the thing that really helps us fine-tune that process. I can tell you, the other things that we have done is we've been extremely successful in the other hires that we've had.
We have.
I mean, right now, we couldn't be more excited about the hires that we've had in the last two years. We've got the best that we could get, and we're seeing that every single day. And so personally, I don't have any feeling that we're not capable of doing what we needed to do. We just had a gap in how to manage, that we couldn't fine-tune that in the interviewing process. And we will fine-tune that in this interviewing process. And I can guarantee you, we will not be forced into making a decision if it's not right. I mean, that's, every single one of us will do that. Now, getting back to the council, again, we've looked at it. So I'll just go and say, Larry, any concern about the document that we will be putting into our resolution tonight?
No, sir.
Kelly?
No.
Alan?
None. Thank you.
And I have none. I feel it's a great document. So with that being said, and with the public hearing being closed, we are now to a point where we can go into our Resolution 2016-86, a resolution confirming the procedure for hiring of a city manager. I'll ask for a motion.
I shall move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Kelly Menke and a second by Alan Rudin. Those in favor may signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously. And so again, thank you very much for the hard work and the hard work we're going to be putting in over the next two and a half months. So at this point, we will turn the meeting back over to Council President Jeffries to finish the remainder of the meeting. So Kevin, with you being back, we're ready to go into the ordinances.
So next order of business, we have ordinance Number 515, an ordinance amending ordinance, let's see, of the McMinn- ordinance Number 549 and 3829 of the McMinnville Municipal Code pertaining to the starting time of regular city council meetings and declaring an emergency. David, can you give us some background on this, please?
Yes. So we've, we've started to pick up our process for updating the McMinnville Municipal Code. And one of the first things that we spotted was that our current code and ordinances indicate that these meetings start at 7:30, not 7 o'clock. So this is a housekeeping ordinance to amend the code to bring us into conformity with the practice that the council has been following since August of 2009. And there you have it.
All right. Any questions for David on that? Okay. So David, sorry, can you please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, this is ordinance Number 5015, and ordinance amending ordinances numbers 4594 and 3829 McMinnville Municipal Code, Section 2.04.010, pertaining to the starting time of regular city council meetings and declaring an emergency.
And one more time, please.
Yes. This is ordinance Number 5015, and ordinance amending ordinance numbers 4594 and 3829 McMinnville Municipal Code, Section 2.04.010, pertaining to the starting time of regular city council meetings and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Melissa, could you call the council, please?
Counselor Hill? Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Menke? Counselor Menke?
Uh, yes.
Sorry. Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
Counselor Jeffries?
Ordinance Number 015 has passed the council unanimously. Ordinance Number, next ordinance is ordinance Number 5016. This is dealing with a telecommunications franchise, David?
Yes. In November of last year, 2015, the council approved ordinance 4996, which granted a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Coastcom Incorporated. The following month, the council approved ordinance 4998, which granted a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Astound Broadband LLC. And in June of this year, Coastcom sold itself to Astound. So what we have now is basically one competitor that bought out another. Astound is operating what was Coastcom's assets in the area under the terms of their franchise agreement. And the franchise agreement for Coastcom is no longer necessary, because Coastcom is no longer an operating entity. So this is ordinance to terminate Coastcom's franchise agreement.
Is there any questions for staff on this one? No, okay. Melissa, can you pull the council, please?
I need to read it twice.
Oh, read it twice, thanks, David. I even put a star next to that, so I don't really forget it.
First reading, ordinance Number 5016, an ordinance of the City of McMinnville terminating a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise with Coastcom, Inc., and repealing ordinance 4996.
One more time, please.
Ordinance Number 5016, an ordinance of the City of McMinnville terminating a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise with Coastcom, Inc., and repealing ordinance 4996.
All right, Melissa, can you pull the council, please?
Counselor, let's see.
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
Council President Jeffries?
Aye.
The ordinance 5016 passed unanimously and will take effect on December 22 of 2016. And the next ordinance we have is ordinance Number 5017, dealing with cannabis. Thanks, David.
Yes, I'll turn my mic's on this time. Maybe the audience will hear you. This is ordinance Number 5017. The purpose of this is to provide for alternative tax collection process related to the 3% tax on marijuana, which was passed by the voters during the general election in November. The ordinance that was originally adopted by the council, 5004, in April 2016, included not only the imposition of a 3% tax, but also detailed procedures for how the city would go about collecting that tax. Since that time, League of Oregon Cities, working on behalf of its membership, as well as Association of Oregon Counties, negotiated with Department of Revenue a form of intergovernmental agreement that will allow for cities, if they choose, and counties that they choose to contract with Department of Revenue, to collect the 3% local tax at the same time that they collect the 17% state tax, since they're taxing the same items. And so what we've done tonight is we've provided an amendment to the ordinance 5004, which provides for an alternative procedure, basically authorizes us to enter into an agreement with Department of Revenue for tax collection purposes. The, just a note, the portion of ordinance 5004 that was referred to the voters was simply allowing the city to collect a 3% tax. The portion that related to how we would collect it was not part of the referral, so there's no problem with coming in and amending it at this point.
All right. Is there any questions? Okay, David, could you read the ordinance by title only, please?
Yes. This is ordinance Number 5017, an ordinance of the City of McMinnville amending the McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.42, Taxation of Cannabis and Cannabis Products, to authorize contracting with a third party to collect taxes.
And one more time, please.
Ordinance Number 5017, an ordinance of the City of McMinnville amending the McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.42, Taxation of Cannabis and Cannabis Products, to authorize contracting with a third party to collect taxes.
Thank you. Melissa, could you call the council, please?
Yes, Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Menke?
Aye.
Counselor Rudin?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
Council President Jeffries?
Aye.
Ordinance Number 5017 passed the council unanimously and will take effect January 1, 2017. Counsel, that takes us into resolutions. From the agenda that may have been posted, Resolution Number 2016, or 2016-84 has been removed off of our agenda for the evening. And Resolution Number 2016-85 is up for consideration. So David?
Yes, so this is a resolution that authorizes the city to enter into the intergovernmental agreement with Department of Revenue to put into effect the collection of the local marijuana tax at the time that they collect the state tax. There is a service fee associated with the services that are being provided by Department of Revenue in reviewing that with our finance department and understanding staffing levels and amount of effort required, as well as the manner and type of services that Department of Revenue will provide, including auditing services and attestation services to go in and verify periodically that the amount of tax being collected is correct. It's staff's recommendation that the city enter into this intergovernmental agreement and that the fees being charged by Department of Revenue are reasonable under the circumstances.
Is there any discussion or questions?
The only thing I had, and David answered it already, was that the appropriate auditing procedure go through on the collecting of the taxes and the appropriate taxes being paid by the owners of the businesses. You know, if there's any kind of schedule on that, quarterly, monthly, they discuss that at all?
I know that the tax payments are remitted to us, I believe, on a quarterly basis. The, you know, I don't know what schedule the Department of Revenue will implement on their audits of these businesses and how they will prioritize that. They'll be managing the statewide portfolio of all of the retailers.
Thank you.
There could be some efficiencies there as they're auditing for their own purposes as well, that we would be the beneficiaries of that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it seems like the auditing and security has got to be right on for this industry to survive and flourish.
All right, anything else, Larry? No? I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion.
Second.
By Counselor Hill and a second by Counselor Rudin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The resolution passes unanimously. This takes us into the executive session for our meeting. And will I have to come back and gavel out of the general session?
No. So what we can do is announce that we are going to adjourn into the executive session. The council will not be coming back into open session to make any decisions. So we can simply, once we go into executive session, at the conclusion of that, adjourn that meeting and be done.
So announced. You all heard it here? Okay, thanks, David. So I'm just going to read this off really quickly. We're going to, where is I know? Just read this. So we're going to go into executive session under Oregon Revised Statutes 192.6602H to discuss legal rights and duties regarding current litigation with the city attorney. And we will adjourn this meeting and move into the conference room. Thank you.